Well, I'm Judy Markland. I'm on the planning board and I am the lucky person who gets to deliver this presentation, I guess. Maybe the other planning board members could introduce themselves while they're here.
I'm Sarah Cooper. I will try to get, I'm going to manage chat in advanced slides. So let me know. So I will monitor that, or you can raise hands and we'll, whoever is moderating will see that.
And I'm Branch Akis, also on the planning board.
Don? Did I see Don?
He's muted.
We have some guests who've been very helpful. Well, Wheatley staff people and guests. Hannah Davis, who is the community development person for Wheatley, who has been a huge help on this. Joy Dupereau, is that right pronunciation, Joy?
Perfect, perfect.
And she is with Department of Conservation Resource and has given much more of her time than she probably should have, but that's been helpful. And Peggy Sloan, who has guided us through this process with great patience. She's with FERCog. And my cat is excited to participate, which will help.
Hi, everyone.
So the reason for this session is to try to explain to you this new floodplain district bylaw that the planning board has developed. We would like to present it at town meeting in May. And before then, we'd like as many people as possible to understand exactly what's involved and how it affects them, if it affects them. This document, the bylaw, itself is eight and a half pages long. A lot of that relates to town responsibilities, not individual responsibilities. But much of it establishes some new procedures for people in town. So we hope you get comfortable with it. We would like feedback. We have maybe less latitude to incorporate feedback than we would sometimes because a lot of this is based on state regulations or state requirements. But we always welcome suggestions and we can, we have worked and we'll try to work to make it clearer as we go along. I read in Conway that Conway, as they go through this process, described what they were doing as tightening up their floodplain regulations. And I think that's a good description. That's basically what's going on here. You all know about the increased flood risk from climate change. Our area is wetter. The storms are much more severe. There's a lot more flood risk. Sarah, maybe you could put the slides up?
Everybody see that? Here we are.
I can't.
No.
I'm not seeing it either, Sarah.
It says you've started screen sharing, but
Can you make it full screen?
Yep. No.
Down on the right, down on the left on the bottom. Well, it's all right.
Why don't you start the slideshow, Sarah, at the top? If you hit slideshow and then go from the beginning.
I'll get it.
Full screen. It's right after animations, if you're going across the top, slideshow.
Thank you.
And then from beginning and it will be full screen.
You can see we didn't rehearse.
From beginning, you gotta click that one.
While you're looking at this, this is
Here we are.
Back one.
Okay, maybe we want to have somebody else manage this part.
You can use the arrow keys on your
Thank you.
To go back.
And now. Okay.
You went way back.
Yes, I went all the way back because I am also still letting people in. So
Maybe, maybe Brent.
I think it may be better if somebody else does share, then I can do the chat.
All right, you're gonna have to make me co-host and
I've already allowed, you're allowed.
Okay. All right, let me just picking up on, maybe Judy, you might, while I'm getting this ready, let people know about questions in chat and that sort of
Yes, thank you. I'm working off an iPad, so I have enlisted Brent is going to field questions or let us know when there are questions. Sarah's going to monitor the chat. We welcome input both ways.
Good. Everybody should be able to see it. Good?
Good.
Thank you.
Now that photo is of Deerfield after Hurricane Irene and all of the photos here will be after Hurricane Irene. That's Mill Village Road. So I think the second slide, Brent. How we got here. We started with a template from DCR. Peggy Sloan and FERCog worked with us extensively to adapt it for Wheatley. We've had it reviewed by town council and by the DCR. And we are here now talking to you. There will be a public hearing also with more chance for feedback and input and education. And then we propose to take it to town meeting for a vote on May 24th. We hope by then that we will have convinced you that this is a great thing for Wheatley, but mostly we hope by then you'll understand it and be comfortable with it. Brent? Next? Now, what's it supposed to do? Why is it being proposed? Well, I think the most important thing is to help ensure that property in flood risk areas is being protected. We want to make sure that people are aware that they're in a flood risk district and to ensure that they're not endangering their property or other peoples. We also want to reduce the potential for both pollution and environmental damage. It's important to see that hazardous materials aren't stored where they're exposed to flood risk. We want to see that changes are not made to the landscape that increase the potential for erosion floods and more damage. And I think the last part, and not necessarily the least, is to ensure that Wheatley property owners can continue to participate in the federal flood insurance program. Passage of something like this is required for eligibility in that program. I should have said, if anybody has questions as we're going along, please raise your hand. Yelp, do something to let us know. Next slide. What this does, it creates or establishes an overlay zoning district that's defined by the floodplain insurance rate maps. 1% floodplain elevations. This is an overlay district. That means it literally rides over the existing, other existing zoning districts. And unlike the aquifer overlay district, its boundaries will perhaps will change over time as this firm, what they call the firm rate maps, changes.
Ryan, could you please mute yourself? Thank you.
The current map was drawn in 1979 and as long as I can remember, people have been saying it's going to be updated in the next couple of years. Well, it hasn't happened yet, but it's long enough now that I suspect it probably will. But until then, this is what we have. When we get a new map, then the districts will change and we'll let you all know. The critical thing from from property owners' perspective is that this this new bylaw creates new review map requirements for what the bylaw describes as development activities. This is development is a defined term in the bylaw. It has specific meaning that I'll get into later, but there are new procedures for new activities and that's the gist of what I have to tell you today. So get to that. The third thing, important thing is that the bylaw requires the appointment of a floodplain administrator. This person will be Hannah in our town or the community development position has a lot of reporting duties to the state and to other people, especially the state, I think. And is also involved in the review process. So you will, if you are in the floodplain, if you initiate a development activity, you will get to meet floodplain administrator. Brent? Next slide. The current flood risk map looks like this with the dark blue areas. Not surprising, they're by and large, they're all related to major waterways in town. If you're looking for your own parcel, you can get better, more detailed information at the Wheatley assessors maps. They're thanks to Don Sluter and his work. On the layers option in those assessors maps, there's a flood layer, flood map layer that will let you see at least in informational terms, how the district works on your parcel. To give you an idea of whether you're in the district or not, or whether the activity you are planning, I guess more importantly, is in the district or not. I think the next slide. The development activities, we talked about this defined term of development, development in the bylaw. And these are the ones that would require review. This is not the wording in the bylaw. This is sort of a general overview interpretation that I made, but it's basically a change to the land or change to the real estate. Putting something on top of it, being a structure or new storage of equipment or materials or changing the shape or contour of the land by dredging or grading or paving or mining. If you look at this, some of this has implications for things that you don't normally think about as needing review. One of the quote structures that is included in the definition is as development is fencing. Storage of equipment. Paving. So so these activities, which reasonably I think one could worry about in a flood district, aren't ones that typically fallen in zoning bylaws. So it's one thing we wanted to get across here is that you have to be aware of these changes and aware of what might require review that you hadn't thought about before. Are there questions? Because this really is the gist of or a very key part of what's involved here.
Also quiet.
Judy, I have some questions.
Okay.
I have questions about hoop houses, you know, an unheated, plastic covered greenhouse that's not generally considered a permanent structure. Do you want me to list them all or go one by one?
Well, I don't know. I can't answer those. I mean, the particulars, I think we tried to and I don't I don't know if Scott or Joy could. We tried to develop a list in advance of things that might specifically be required or not. And I think we came down with the idea that it's hard. These things are so individualistic and the circumstances vary. I mean, I couldn't I can't, I think maybe Scott or Joy could answer better than I, but I would think with something like a hoop house, it might depend a lot on how deep you have to put the frame to, how much disturbance you're doing to the ground.
Joyce says she can help with this.
Oh, good.
Yeah. Is that all right?
Please, that's what we love that.
Okay, so a hoop house, as you described, Margaret, is an agricultural amenity or feature, if you will, a structure. And so typically a regular sized hoop house, and I say regular, meaning not something that's the size of an amphitheater, but the size that you usually see on a farm or out in an agricultural field. Typically, those are what we call de minimis. They're not actually a structure of any substance enough to impede the floodplain. I mean, most hoop houses that I've seen, if there's a flood coming, the hoop house will probably be destroyed. Is that your, yeah. So what this development activities is really concerned about is anything that will change the floodplain. And that can mean several things. That can mean something that will increase the base flood elevation simply by the fact that the thing, whatever it is, building or whatever, takes up so much room in the floodway, in the floodplain that now the storage of floodwaters has to expand or get higher. So a hoop house probably wouldn't do that. Also, the other thing is anything that would adversely impact your neighbors. So if someone were to put up a solid privacy fence, for example, across maybe a perennial stream or an intermittent stream, and then all of a sudden there's a flood and that stream is used to carry some of the floodwaters, the fence may divert the floodwaters to the neighbors and erode their property or something like, so that really this definition, as Judy points out, is very broad. And as she points out, many communities don't always think of all these things, but typically all of these things come under either the building department or the conservation commission, or they are things that the state actually takes care of, like a large mining operation or drilling operation, your community really wouldn't be focused on that. The state would have regulations that cover that. So I don't know if you want to present another item or not, or if what I've described might help you to categorize these things.
Yeah, that is, that is very helpful, Joy. I guess I'm then interested in understanding what the process is. You know, if you're, if somebody is going to put up a hoop house, and I would say they vary in size a fair amount, if, you know, even just driving around Wheatley, but you're right, that some of them are not enormous and I think wouldn't you know, impact where floodwaters went. But I am curious about whether the landowner can make the decision, like I'm putting up a reasonably sized hoop house and I think it's de minimis, or whether they need to go through the process and get, you know, the checkbox is checked that Hannah and the Concom, you know, agree with that assessment.
Yes, that's entirely a local decision that your community will make, how that's handled.
Okay, so then I'm throwing it back to the local community. Can you, I mean, and I can throw in some other examples, you know, if somebody wants to put a load of gravel, you know, filling in ruts on their farm road is, you know, or do a small amount of grading. You know, Judy, you mentioned fencing, that's something that I think, as you said, has not been something people have had to get permission for before. And I'm also curious about short-term storage of equipment, you know, if you're, if you leave something in the field overnight, does that count? If you leave it there for a month or two in the summer, does that count? You know, where are the lines and when do you need to check with the town?
This is Brent. If I could just jump in here and have Judy and Joy confirm this. I'm going to move the slides just back to this slide where the bluish purplish are the the flood zones, that the bylaw does not apply generally to all parcels in Wheatley. Just want to make sure that's very clear, right?
Yes.
It's really only applicable to property owners of parcels that fall within these demarcated flood risk zones, like along the Connecticut River and, you know, and here in central Wheatley and so forth. So I just wanted to lay concerns if there were any or misunderstanding that development of all kinds taking place anywhere in Wheatley is now suddenly subjected to new floodplain-related oversight. That is not true.
It's also not true on the parcel where it's outside the floodplain district.
Yes. That doesn't, of course, Margaret still has great, you know, very legitimate questions. Just wanted to make sure that it's understood that it relates to parcels inside the district.
Thanks, Brent. That's helpful.
I have a couple chat items and then we have someone with their hand up. The chat item was, one of them is if updating septic systems are an issue, Wheatley should look at building a wastewater treatment plant and sewer system. So that's one thing. And that was from M. Zikowski. And the next question was from Joyce Palmer Fortune. What does the review consist of?
I will get to that.
Okay, and Mr. Jackson?
Yeah, I just, the question I have is this is a bylaw we're talking about, right?
Yes.
Would there be regulations promulgated after the bylaws passed?
They can be. The planning board doesn't normally do regulations. I mean, we have, but
Yeah, I mean, if this were a wetlands bylaw, you would pass the bylaw and then the conservation commission would promulgate regulations that would answer some of the questions perhaps that Margaret has. So it might say that, you know, hoop houses are allowed provided they meet these conditions, in which case they only would have to apply or file or get reviewed if they can't meet those conditions. So that might be one way to address these concerns where, you know, whether it's somebody's private driveway or an access road for farming and somebody wants to fill in the ruts, you know, that could potentially be addressed by regulation rather than have to, you know, figure it all out with the bylaw.
Well, well, as my understanding that the process, the review process here, when we get to it, throws most of this back to the conservation commission anyway, so we can work with you to develop those.
Yeah, but the thing is, is that conservation commission doesn't have jurisdiction. We only review and advise. It's the floodplain manager that administrated it.
Well, okay.
I mean, based on the last, last iteration that I read, you know, we don't issue permits, we don't give permission to proceed. We just review and report back to the administrator. So that, it's a little murky for me how the process is going to work. But if it's going to be the conservation commission to ask to make those calls, then I definitely would want to see regulations so that every time somebody wants to, you know, repave their driveway, they don't have to come and talk to me about whether they need to file or not, you know, and I assume we're going to need forms, we're going to need processes for filing and describing the work that would be reviewed. Anyway, I don't really know. I have one other question I want to put out there that I've asked before, but I haven't gotten an answer to. And Peggy, I think you said you were going to look into it. But I'm still unclear whether towns can pass bylaws that are stricter than the state law when it comes to regulating agriculture. There's the letter from the attorney general's office in regards to the town of Medways or Medways Wetlands bylaw that basically says that no local bylaw can be more strict than the state law. Has that been resolved? Has that been looked into?
I think that particular question went to town council. But I don't have that handy, so let me look back. Judy, do you recall?
I recall a not very specific answer to that. Hannah, do you remember?
No, I don't have it off the top of my head, but that's certainly something that we can touch base on.
I do know, I looked up the agricultural exemption, 48 section three, and there's a sentence in there that I interpreted as a carve-out from from the agricultural exemption that says, no zoning ordinance or bylaw shall exempt land or structures from floodplain or wetlands regulations established pursuant to the general laws. This is in the in 48 three, the egg section. So it looked to me just as though agriculture is subject to DEP laws, that they would be subject to this, but
Yeah, the one place where it would be of question is generally the way that the regulations are written under the Wetlands Protection Act that determine whether the conservation commission has any jurisdiction to review is there can be no substantial fill in floodplanes. But there's also a place in the regulations that says that buildings are allowed and that there can be no substantial fill or loss of flood storage capacity apart from the footprint of the building. And so essentially, somebody could propose buildings and we wouldn't have any jurisdiction to review the extent to which the building reduces the flood storage capacity of the floodplain. But if they wanted to build up land around the building, then we would have jurisdiction over that, but not the building itself. Otherwise, I think we would have jurisdiction over any kind of fill or loss of flood storage capacity in the floodplain.
It looks like Yeah, sorry.
Can I just make a couple of observations? So these regulations that you're speaking about for your bylaw are considered minimum National Flood Insurance Program regulations. They are minimum. And we have 341 NFIP communities in Massachusetts. Every one of them are required to pass these minimum regulations. These minimum regulations do not interfere with the Wetlands Protection Act. They do not interfere with any other state laws. They have been approved by the attorney general. They are, you know, they are completely for flood, the floodplain, the 1% chance FEMA-defined floodplain. So I know you showed a topo map earlier with some purplish colors along the streams and rivers and so forth. If those lines line up with the FEMA floodplain, then that's your floodplain. So I have not come across, I've only been doing this in Massachusetts for six years. I did it for a number of years in another state, the same job. I have not come across a community in Massachusetts yet that has found that these regulations conflict with anything that they're doing. With regard, Mr. Jackson, to your one statement about putting a structure in the floodplain and not having to worry about compensatory storage, that's not actually the way it works. Anything that's put in the floodplain that occupies space in that floodplain that the current flood storage capacity fills in the 1% capacity fills in the one percent chance flood, uh, is required to have compensatory storage, a building or anything. So even a building is definitely required in the floodplain, not outside the floodplain. But in the one percent chance, the one hundred year floodplain, if you put a building in there, you are required to have compensatory storage. That's how the Conservation Commissions are supposed to implement the Wetlands Protection Act. Um, and most of the communities I work with do it that way, um, you know.
It's, it's not true under the Wetlands Protection Act, and I can give you the citation if you want.
You would be the only community that reads it that way, which is fine. That's between you and DEP.
It's what the straight English of it is. Very few communities actually read the, the regulations. I do it for my work. I do workshops on the exemption. Uh, so people may not know it's there, they may not act upon it. But I'm just concerned because of the Medway letter, it sounds like what you're saying is that the, the federal requirement preempts these sort of state exemptions. And that the Med, Medway la- letter of nineteen ninety-six would not suggest that that would interfere in any way.
What I'm saying, I don't know anything about agricultural exemptions. What I know is that these, um, requirements that are in your bylaw, now compensatory storage is not a minimum NFIP standard. That's a Massachusetts state law above and beyond the NFIP, but in your bylaw that you're looking at tonight, these are minimum NFIP regulations that you have to adopt at the local level to remain in the NFIP program. And they do not conflict with other state laws in Massachusetts. These minimum bylaws do not.
I, I have a question. Is the Hurley Park included in this floodplain district? And the second one is, why aren't these bodies of water along Interstate ninety-one included?
All right, well, that's sort of the awkward silence, so, um.
Did everybody hear my comment?
Brad, I think you gotta go look at the map, Fred. This little map isn't gonna help you. You gotta go on, get on Watley.org. Get the assessor's map, hit, put the floodplain on it and go look in detail at the places that you're curious about.
The, the ones along ninety-one, I could see on here, they're not colored. Well, I assume they're not colored unless the, they're a lighter blue or lighter purple. There's nothing along the bodies of water on I ninety-one.
Well, Fred, we can't answer why the the map is drawn, I mean, obviously, they don't meet the definition of one percent flood risk.
Floodwater coming pouring down from Vermont in them. I mean, I can, I'm not an expert on this at all, but I could speculate for some reasons why they might not be impacted the way, you know, certainly the Connecticut or even some of our smaller rivers might be.
And these are nineteen seventy-nine maps, so in reality, there may be flooding in other areas of the community. But for the purposes of the bylaw, the only areas that are regulated are the FEMA one percent chance or one hundred year floodplain according to the FEMA map. This is not a FEMA map. Someone may have very carefully laid the FEMA floodplain on this map, and I'm not arguing this map. I'm just saying the only official map for the purposes of the National Flood Insurance Program is the FEMA map. And your map is unfortunately very, very old, um, but you are in the middle Connecticut Hocke watershed. And FEMA is working on that now. The work maps are expected to come out this summer. So people in your community will be welcome to review those work maps at that point. I don't expect a lot of changes because there's not a lot of money for them to make detailed studies in every town. But those work maps will come out this summer, and then those will be followed by some preliminary maps with an appeal period. So the anticipation is that sometime within the next year, year and a half, you, um, will be asked to adopt this bylaw, um, if you don't do it before that, uh, in order to be able to adopt the new maps that come out in twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four. So, um, uh, you know, your map is old and you're right, Mr. Orlovsky, there may be many areas in your community that you think are in the floodplain that aren't shown on the map that way, and that might be just because the mapping analysis they did in nineteen seventy-nine is inadequate in many ways.
Well, if it's gonna be part of the bylaw, I, I think the map should be current map.
This is the current map.
Well, it's, and I hear it's, you're saying it's this nineteen seventy-nine map, but whatever, okay. The maps in the assessor's, uh, file, uh, are, are more current, should be the current ones.
Well, I think that
This is as current as we are, Fred.
Right, okay.
The, the mapping of the boundary of the floodplain is done by another agen- an agency outside of Watley. And that mapping to determine the boundaries of the floodplain was last done in nineteen seventy-nine. It's not done on an annual basis, it's done very occasionally. And there's new mapping going on now, but it's not complete and it's not available. So the only data we have to go on now that marks the outer limits of the one percent flood risk area is based on nineteen seventy-nine data. And that's what is depicted on what you're seeing here in that purple area, that nineteen seventy-nine based area.
Well, all these along in the ninety, Interstate ninety-one where they are in seventy-nine.
They may be because they were spring fed, Fred. They're spring fed, Fred.
Yes, they're, they're self-contained. They're not, they're not flowing bodies of water.
Not as affected. There's a couple more questions in chat.
Yeah.
Um, one is, does this only apply to the portion of a lot that is in the overlay?
Yes.
And the other question is, can we talk about what review consists of?
Yes, um, let's move on to slides.
All right, I'll get us back on track here. This is the next slide after
Yeah, um, I think we've discussed the agricultural activities and discovered that we need to go back to town council. Um, I read the what I thought was the carve-out from, in the agricultural exemption. I think it's quite likely that these are included, but we'll, we'll get more in specific on that. Um, the other, I think, is that there are for, for mobile structures, there are requirements here citing requirements. And so RVs need to either be road-ready and, or, or not to be in place very long. And then, Brent, the next slide I think is the
And I'll, I'll take you right there, but Joyce did add a question and which picks up or connects to what Fred was bringing up. So Joyce asked, you know, did anyone say why we'd wanna adopt this bylaw? Given the fact that our overlay district is based on, you know, let's argue arguably out-of-date data, set nineteen seventy-nine data. And I think Joy can answer that. I mean, my own understanding of the answer to that question is that if we do not pass this bylaw, then, uh, Watley property owners who, who own parcels in the overlay district would, uh, risk not being eligible for the federal flood insurance program. That's the main, the, the main need for the bylaw. But maybe I'll defer to Joy for a, a more thorough answer to this question.
That's, that's ninety percent of it, Mr. Chuck, is, um, the, um, if you don't have a compliant bylaw, then the, then FEMA will essentially throw you out of the program, which means that the policyholders that you have will not be able to renew when their policies come due. Also, it means that if there's a federally declared disaster, certain disaster assistance will be withheld from communities that do not participate in the NFIP. And you will not be able to get certain, um, flood risk reduction mitigation grants from the federal government because you don't participate in the NFIP. There's quite a few ways that they penalize communities that are not in the NFIP. Uh, and in order to be in the NFIP, one of the requirements is that you have compliant bylaws, which this one is very wonderfully compliant.
Very good. And when the, um, the, the mapping data is updated, perhaps in the coming year or so, then in effect, the bylaw is now, will now be with reference to the new, the newly defined boundaries of the, the flood district. So it's not like we're going to have to revise the bylaw each time the mapping data is changed.
Right, the only thing that has to change each time the mapping, uh, each time you have a new effective map, you would just have to kind of re-adopt the bylaw by just changing the date reference to the map, so that everybody knows which maps you're following. You're not following the nineteen seventy-nine ones anymore. You would be following the two thousand twenty-three maps or whatever.
Okay. Uh, I know there's some other things popping up in the chat, but I'll just move to the next slide. We will not over
Well, I saw one of them and it's easily answered. Joyce asked whether anybody in town does have federal floodplain insurance, and the answer is yes. There are several policyholders in town with quite large, uh, amounts insured. This is the, the basic process and I, what I did was try to compare it to, to the existing zoning, um, which is on the right. Um, now you would normally go for a building permit, you go to the building inspector. You might need wetlands review from the Concom. You might need a special permit from the ZBA or variance. And if it's not a single-family home, you probably need site plan review from the planning board. All of those still would apply in the floodplain overlay district. But this other development activity that we normally don't think about as needing review is stuck in there. You need approval from the Concom. And then, or a review by the Concom to see that you're compliant. And then the process would be that you get these approvals and then you go see the floodplain administrator and get a sign-off that is indeed, um, you are compliant, you can go ahead. And I don't know if that answers the questions people had about the review process. But maybe if I go the next slide, it might be clearer.
And there, we will get to a question about septic systems, but I think that's, I think we maybe we'll get through the material and then we can address all of the questions that are coming up.
Um, how does, what does the property owner do? Well, first you go to the assessor's office and look at that paper map because the other ones that are available are informational only. You get those necessary approvals. And then you trot down and see Hannah or whoever is then the floodplain administrator and get the sign-off. And, uh, and that's basically it. And this, and there is a penalty, um, if you were found non-compliant. So.
So perhaps as a thought experiment, one of, uh, you know, one of our fellow citizens points out that, uh, now many houses have, um, many houses in the floodplain have septic systems that will periodically need to be replaced or repaired or things like that. So that's potentially some, that would be an example of development, so, um.
Are there from a floodplain?
Uh, well, so the, the claim here is made that all houses on the east side of River Road from the Chris, from, from Christian Lane North, um, their backyards are in the floodplanes. And most septic systems are in the backyards. So I don't know that this is, so it's, it's suggested that we may have a number of houses uh, that have septic systems lying within the floodplain.
But those are Board of Health regulations under DEP. So surely, uh, those are what you've been following all along anyway. Um, yeah.
So this would, so Joy, would the, um, you know, the repair of an existing septic system or, um, if a new house were built um, with a new septic system, how would that relate to this, this particular bylaw, assuming the parcel uh, lot, lay within the floodplain overlay district?
Right, so if the, um, Board of Health approves the location for the newer altered septic system, in other words, the soil percolation, the DEP regulations, everything is met that way, then the only floodplain, uh, regulations are that it would be, um, installed and constructed so that no floodwaters can enter that system and no pollution from the system can come out into floodwaters. So if it's a closed septic system, that's fine. If it's a leaching field or that kind of a situation, you know, I don't know how that wouldn't get into floodwaters. I don't know how, um, that would work anyway, uh, considering if it's in the floodplain. I don't know where the groundwater table is, but, uh, that's again a Board of Health, um, decision as to the location of septic tank systems.
So in terms of what we're seeing, if a resident in town needed to do work of whatever kind on a septic system, um, and that, it, what in a parcel that fell within the floodplain overlay district. Then as what we're, the slide that we're looking at here would say, well, they need to obtain the necessary approvals to do that work. And going back to this particular slide, um, there would be Board of Health as well as potentially Conservation Commission review, is that right?
Definitely Board of Health, at least for the sighting of the system. You know, because there's, again, I'm getting a little outside of my wheelhouse. The Board of Health, the DEP has the regulations on water pollution and septic tanks, septic systems. That's a DEP regulation um, that is implemented by a local Board of Health. Uh, again, all I know from the floodplain perspective is that what's in the septic system can't come out during a flood and the floodwaters can't go into the septic system. That's the part of the minimum regulations under the NFIP. I don't know if that makes sense, but that's a place where we don't overlap probably as much as we should, but the NFIP stays curtailed to let's not put that stuff in the flood, floods, you know, the floodwaters.
So Joy, if you I just ask a question. If, so if you already had an existing, um, septic system and the groundwater table was increasing, so they maybe needed to make a raised system, that raised system presumably would be subject to this review because it is impacting the flood storage. Is that correct?
Under the Wetlands Protection Act, yes.
How about under this floodplain bylaw?
Uh, as long as the raised, you know, the fill that's put there does not increase the base flood elevation. Uh, so let me, I don't want to take a lot of time, but there is a higher standard in Massachusetts that's found in the Wetlands Protection Act. The minimum standards under the NFIP say that if you're in the floodway, you cannot raise the base flood elevation at all in any way by doing anything. If you're in the floodplain, which is the broader floodplain outside of the floodway, in the floodplain, you cannot raise the base flood elevation by more than a foot anywhere in the entire area, upstream and downstream. But in Massachusetts, the regulation found in the Wetlands Protection Act says you can't do that anyway because you have to provide compensatory storage. Um, and I know, uh, one of the gentlemen earlier brought up something about the footprint of the building and he subsequently let me know that's in the agricultural section of the Wetlands Protection Act. So I'm not familiar with that, but I do know, um, that in general, in Massachusetts, you can't put anything in the floodplain if it's going to increase the base flood elevation. That's either by minimum NFIP or state law. Does that answer that, Peggy?
Yes.
And just again, before we move on, again, there is another related question about, you know, if a parcel partly falls within the floodplain district and, and some part of it falls outside. So if, for example, somebody, uh, puts a fence, um, in a parcel, but in the portion that's not in the floodplain overlay district, then they don't have to worry about these additional steps.
Correct.
Or you confirm that that's true.
Yeah, the only, um, note I would make about that is if you place a structure, like a building on a lot and any portion of the structure, even like a little corner of the structure is in the floodplain, then the entire structure has to meet the floodplain requirements, flood resistance standard constructions in the building code. But a fence that goes, that's outside of the floodplain is not our business.
Okay. So Judy, I'm back to these photos.
Well, that was just the end, um, questions, and I think people have, have Well, that was just the end and questions, and I think people have, have been asking, um, and should keep on going.
Judy, I have a question if I could interject here. This is Mike. I have a question of if you have part of the floodplain within your parcel. How do you put that on the ground to know where it is? Are there any controls within any of the?
Yes, that's the work of a land surveyor. That's what they do. They go to the site and they. Use their maps and their instruments to tell you where that line is on your property. Sometimes an architect or an engineer can do it also. It has to be a registered design professional. Um, that can tell you that. Now, so. If it's really, um, sometimes that's very clear on a map, but your maps are really difficult to use. I hate to say that you probably already know that. They're so old and you have many more streets and different things. Um, than your old maps show. Um, certainly many things have been done in Waitley since nineteen seventy-nine. Um, so that's what makes it so difficult for you because in many communities where the maps are not so old. The maps are actually digital and they're on the FEMA, in the FEMA National Flood Hazard Data Layer and they are really very clear. And, you know, a property owner can get a pretty gosh darn good idea of where that line is on their property. But for Waitley and all of the communities in Western Mass, unfortunately, uh, we're not there yet. When you do get your new maps, they will be digital. Um, and so you'll have a much better, uh, they also will have photo underlay or for photo ortho base, I guess is what they call it. So you'll be able to see like a twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two Google map underneath your floodmaps. And you'll be able to have a much better idea where that line is. Uh, but for technical and official purposes, it would be like a land surveyor or an engineer that would put that line on a site map for you. As far as the Conservation Commission, I mean, if a property owner comes before them with one of, you know, one of those things that's called development. Uh, the Conservation Commission can make that decision based on their understanding of the map. So I'm not saying that everybody has to have a land surveyor. I'm just saying that if you really want to know exactly where that line is on your property, that's the only way.
So I think, uh, another question came up with this proposal. Are the flood zone boundaries changing or staying the same? And I think the interpretation of that is, um. Have we made any changes? We, uh, we used to have a flood hazard overlay district. Is that right, Judy?
Yes, it's the same district basically.
It's the same district. I don't see other questions.
I have a question for Scott if, um, if he's still here. I heard, I think you said that, that the Concom would establish regulations after. The bylaws passed, so. So if the planning board was to establish regulations for this, it would be after the bylaw, not before. Is that correct?
Correct. You know, you pass the bylaw and once you have the law, then you write regulations to implement the law. And it sounds to me like this is sufficiently complex that it should have regulations, but.
Yes, I think so.
Question of whose regulations, if it's your bylaw, they should be your regulations. If you want the commission to review and comment on any proposal, we, that. I mean, that can be done, but it's hard to imagine how the Concom would be. Implementing your bylaw, but I'm, I'm not sure.
I think. Well, it's a small town. We ought to be able to figure this out.
So there's another question really about what's the. Now, what's the key map here? So the online assessor's map, as we've mentioned, is, is just. Advisory. The authoritative map is the paper map that's maintained in, uh, town offices. Is that accurate, Judy?
That's my understanding.
That's right.
The paper maps are available for viewing at the town clerk's office, so, um, as soon as you go into the town offices, you can talk to Amy Schrader and she'll be able to pull them for you.
They are also available online, um. You know, I'm, I mean, I'm used to using them. I know for someone new looking at them online, they'd probably be like, oh my God, where am I on these maps? But I'm very happy, you know, if you have a property owner who wants to know something about the map, uh, as it relates to their property. Again, I can't provide an exact floodplain line, but I could have a pretty robust discussion with that property owner. To try to give them the piece of the map that shows their property along with, uh, Massachusetts has a GIS system. They've just recently renamed it Mass Mapper. And the Mass Mapper shows parcel boundaries and building footprints. Um, again, it's not the official floodplain map, but they do overlay. The Q three data as best they can. So if you take the parcel map and the building, uh, footprint shadow that's in Mass Mapper. And you apply it to, uh, the regular FEMA map, you get a pretty good idea of, of what's going on there. And again, I'm very happy to help somebody. You can give a, um, you can give one of your citizens, uh, my email address or my phone number. And, um, I'll get right back to him and help him figure it out.
Don, how different is, is the assessor's map from layer from, from what Joy just described on Mass Mapper?
He's there, but he's muted. He's there, but he's muted.
Judy, the, the assessor's map, it does have the state's GIS on it. Uh, every year the state updates their GIS mapping and, and there's, uh. Eight to twelve years of GIS data on there and there are overlays for floodplain districts. Uh, wetlands and, uh, well, of course, the GIS, uh, on the assessor's map. Map is, is updated, uh, every year. We pay to have it updated. The state has a contract to update. Make it current every year, so. Most of the data is, is, is very relevant and up to date.
I just, I'm not sure.
I think what they're saying is that the floodplain map is not up to date. That the overlay that. Is, well, it's certainly not up to date and it's also not the official. FEMA map. It's somebody doing their best to put it in there for us. But it's not the map you have to comply with. That's not getting updated per year.
This is Don, Donnis or Peggy can. Answer this better than I, so, um.
At the end of the day, my understanding is that the paper map that's at the town clerk's office is the official map. That one needs to comply with. If the digital maps that are currently available are the, you know, best approximation of that paper map. But at the end of the day, the official map is the paper map. Correct, Joy?
Yes, yes, e- even the Mass Mapper map, um, is considered to be an approximation. Uh, the only thing that's official, actually official, is the FEMA map itself in whatever format. Whether it's your paper map in your town clerk's office or the one that you clip from online from the FEMA website. Uh, but certainly those other maps are very critical in helping people understand where. All of that is taking place. It's just that for purposes of insurance or purposes of building code, uh, regulations, you have to use the, the FEMA map.
So I'm not seeing any new questions in the.
I have one, I have one final, less a question than a comment. It's, I, it's very helpful to me to have, um. Worked out this understanding that there will be some regulations promulgated once this has passed. Because I, I really appreciate your efforts to, you know, come to the ag comm and to have these hearings so that people can ask questions. But I feel like the, you know, the most specific questions, um, that help people understand. What's like, you know, what's the process going to be for a particular activity and what's the likely outcome? Um, you know, there really aren't specific answers to yet. And, and so I think being able to say to people. We actually don't have the specific answers to those questions, but you can come to the planning board and tell them what you think when we write the regulations. You know, maybe the best answer that's possible at this stage, and at least then people understand what the process is. Because, you know, the questions that I've heard particularly from farmers, you know, around roads and fencing and hoop houses and those kinds of things. You know, it, it isn't very clear when. You know, once this is actually in place, when will somebody be able to, to look at the guidelines and understand what they can do and when won't they? So, um. It will, you know, that I can see that there's a process in front of us and I think it's good to make that clear to people.
I think we all learned a lot today.
Yeah, I just, Joy, if I could just ask, in other, are there other towns that have adopted these bylaws so far?
Yes, y- yes, um, so. So every community that's in the NFIP across the country has to have compliant bylaws. One issue in Massachusetts is that, uh, when I came about six years ago. I looked at the bylaws that were in most of these towns and I asked, uh, my colleague who'd been here for thirty-three years doing this job. I said, why are the bylaws not compliant? And he said, what do you mean? And I pointed out a number of things, uh, and he said, well, that's just the way we do it in Massachusetts and FEMA approved it. So apparently there were FEMA staff at some time in the past to approve bylaws in Massachusetts. Uh, then FEMA staff changed about the same time that I came here and they looked at the bylaws and said, they're not compliant. And so we all knew you can't just suspend three hundred and forty-one communities at once. So we've been working since about twenty seventeen on getting the minimum NFIP standards. To be in a shape called the Massachusetts Model Floodplain Bylaw, which, um, what FEMA approved in twenty twenty. Uh, and that is the minimum standard. So now every community in Massachusetts that's in the NFIP. Will have to adopt those minimum regulations from the twenty twenty model. Now, um, that's happening sort of mapping exercise by mapping exercise. So for example. Um, in southeastern Mass, there's a Huck Gate watershed called the Cape Cod watershed. Strangely enough, it's not on Cape Cod, but in any case. Those thirty-one communities had to adopt the, the, uh, this model bylaw, uh, last year, just about a year ago. Uh, because they got new maps and FEMA would not accept any other bylaw besides this one. So, uh, they did. And now other communities across the state are adopting the model bylaw, just like you have in this one. Um, community by community, the next set of mapping, uh, new maps that come in are the Charles. And there's ninety communities in the Charles watershed, uh, that all have to adopt the same. So ultimately. Um, although Hannah's done and Peggy a ton of work on this, you don't, FEMA and the state are not going to make you adopt this. Until you get new maps. So, you know, you can adopt it now and then when you get new maps, all you do is change the date. Uh, or you can wait until you get new maps, but this is what's compliant and this is what you'll have to adopt sooner or later. Uh, otherwise FEMA will not be happy.
I guess the question I was trying to get at is, you know, if other communities have promulgated regulations to implement their bylaws? And have any other communities involved the Conservation Commission in reviewing and approving activities within floodplains under the bylaw?
Yes, so I do not know your specific answer. Have they promulgated regulations? I would suspect that they would. I mean, they have to follow this bylaw, so however each community chooses to follow it. Uh, the state looks at it as that's the communities, uh, that's up to the community how they do it. As far as the conservation commissions, they are heavily involved. So in most communities that do really good floodplain management, the conservation commissions work hand in hand with the building department. Because again, uh, most of the minimum NFIP regulations are actually found in the Massachusetts State Building Code. And that's enforced by the building department. So your building official would be enforcing ninety percent of the NFIP regulations. Just by enforcing the state building code, even if you weren't in the NFIP, uh, those would still be being enforced by virtue of state law. So this, um, bylaw is kind of the handful of minimum regulations that just aren't in the building code. And typically, yes, conservation commissions do have a great deal of oversight into what happens in the floodplains. That's the intent of the Wetlands Protection Act in the first place. And I just tell you, Mr. Jackson, I have a whole hour and a half presentation on conservation commissions and how they implement the NFIP. I'm very happy to give it to your town anytime, you know, just, uh, just let me know and we'll represent that.
The, the, the thing I'm most concerned about, and if you're, what you have covers it, then I'd be, I'd be very happy to see it. I mean, I'm, I'm very familiar with the responsibilities and the jurisdiction under the Wetlands Protection Act. But where there are exempt activities, we're going to have to create new forms, new procedures, new regulations. And in particular for agriculture. Uh, and so I just wondered, are other town conservation commissions, the ones that are writing and promulgating these additional regulations? For what would otherwise be exempt activities under the Wetlands Protection Act?
Yeah, I'm, you know, I, agriculture doesn't come up on the east side of the state, which is where most of the communities that I'm familiar with have adopted. Um, and so you have a very fair question there, you know, uh, on, on your side of the state. Uh, there's quite a bit of agriculture. I know that these minimum regulations don't conflict with state laws regarding agriculture. So I think if someone said to me, well, look at this in the bylaw, this conflicts with the state laws for agriculture. I would want to see that because then I would need to reckon that with FEMA as to what do we do about that, but that just has not come up at all.
Yeah, and in my reading of the regs, as I, as I sent you a separate message, it's just that one section on agricultural buildings. Uh, that would, because everything else is got sort of common language. It says, so. You know, as long as no substantial amount of fill is placed in the floodplain, bordering land subject to flooding. So that means that most other agricultural activities would have to meet that condition anyway, or they would have to come to the commission. It's just that question about buildings that, that I'm just haven't heard anything that. If, if you're, if you were to say that this, that the Attorney General's Office has stated. That the model bylaw does not conflict with any other law, uh, that's good enough for me.
Yeah, he has, the, the Attorney General's Office, they have not stated that. What they have done is reviewed all of the bylaws like this one. That have gone into effect and they have passed them. So my, the consensus is if they conflicted, they would not have been able to pass them. However, um, you know, agriculture is covered for a great part under the building code. So what I would like to do, Mr. Jackson, is, um, as soon as I can, I don't know if I can get to it this week, but I would like to look into that. And send you, uh, information from FEMA about agricultural structures in the floodplain. Um, I know they do have some guidance on that. I'm, uh, I need to reach out to my friends in Kansas and get that. They, they have a lot of it out there, uh, and I'm happy to share that with you because it's a federal program. So if it's good for Kansas, Kansas, it's good for Massachusetts.
Yeah, that'd be great. And if, if you don't have the Medway letter, I'm happy to send you a copy of it because that's. The one that gets cited over and over again when we tell commissions that their weapons bylaws cannot regulate agriculture more strictly than the state law.
Yeah, I'd love to see that letter. Yes, thank you.
So Judy, I think, is there anybody else besides the floodplain? Is it administrator or manager that gets appointed to administer this?
As far as I know, it's just the floodplain administrator.
Is there anybody else besides the administrator and the Conservation Commission that's involved with reviewing activities that might be? Inconsistent with the bylaw?
Department.
The building department, that every, every, um. Board in town that reviews has to take the floodplain bylaw into account.
Right, does any other board in town have to change their jurisdiction in order to do that? Like the Conservation Commission will have to because essentially what you said is we have to review everything.
Well, I interpreted it to be that if the building department were reviewing. Building permits. That they are doing the review.
It just says, in addition to any building permit or other local state, uh, this may be an old one. You'll have to tell me if this is outdated. It says, in addition to any building permit or other local state or federal permits needed. It requires review and approval by the Conservation Commission for all proposed construction or other development in the floodplain overlay district.
I'm, I'm sorry, what are you reading?
I'm reading from the fourth draft, September sixteenth, like, twenty twenty-one, uh, section G. There may be several other drafts that came after. There may be several other drafts that came after that, but I don't.
That wording is still there.
Yeah. Can I say that's not a minimum requirement? That's something the town had in place. And, uh, when I work with folks like Peggy and Hannah, uh, the only time I make a comment about something in place that's already in place is if it's going to conflict with something else like the building code. Then I make a comment saying this conflicts with the building code, or if it's something that might confuse people. So, uh, I did not comment exactly on this section G, um, because I don't have a problem with it. You know, every community gets to decide how they're going to implement the NFIP regulations. So we don't try to tell communities how to implement them. We just tell them what it is they need to implement. However, they choose to do that. This was a, um, a local decision, section G.
Okay. So Scott, you, you would prefer that this somehow said excluded, just reference circumstances for development activity that's not covered by a build, a building permit.
Well, I mean, it may be something that requires a building permit, but it also requires conservation commission approval, but that, that would happen anyway under the Wetlands Protection Act.
Yeah, yeah.
Really, it's really the exempt stuff that, the stuff that we don't normally already regulate. I worry that suddenly now we need to do it, which means we're going to have to create standards. We're going to have to create regulations. We're going to have to create procedures and, and forms so that, you know, somebody wants to put up a sugar house, you know, in, 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 wow, a sugar house is probably not the right thing, but a greenhouse, you know, and it's going to be under 4,000 square feet. That would be out of our jurisdiction of the Wetlands Protection Act, you know, flood plain. But then with this bylaw, it's sort of saying, no, you still have to be reviewed or approve it. So then we have to have, have a way for landowners to apply to us, you know, or ask whether they need a full review or whether to submit all the information necessary for a full review.
So if I could, we had lots of discussions about who was going to fulfill this role. And because the conservation commission, um, and I think you were part of these discussions, Scott reviewed so much already, aside from the exemptions, that it made sense to maybe expand their, their review purview a little further. Um, but acknowledging that, you know, there would need to be some kind of a separate application, uh, perhaps with accompanying regulations so that, um, there was a clear process for people to follow.
Yeah, no, I remember that. And, and for us, you know, those exempt activities that may require fill or other things, it's the same thing we would do for non-exempt activities. So it's not really more difficult. It's just how will it be managed? You know, will the, the floodplain administrator be the one that creates the forms and the, and the procedures and then refers it to the commission for an opinion? Or is the commission actually have to formally approve on some kind of official form? The thing is, it's not our bylaw. So, you know, we could, we could, I mean, in the same way that we sign off on building permit applications by indicating that, no, we have no concerns about it. That's an easy thing to do. It's an informal, uh, thing. But if, if it's formal action that we have to take, then we have to figure out how we pass, how we construct the rules and make them public and, and the process, et cetera.
That's, that's the next step is to make an application, um, that can be handed out for folks for those exempt activities.
Are you saying, Mr. Jackson, that you don't use order of conditions for things?
We do for anything that's under the Wetlands Protection Act. I'm talking about anything that's exempt. And, and like I said, in large degree, that's agricultural stuff.
Okay.
Agricultural stuff, you know, uh, they don't normally come to us, but we don't normally get requests for large amounts of fill or other things like that. Uh, it's the buildings, I guess, that are going to be the thing, you know, if somebody wants to put up a greenhouse or hoop, a high hoop or, or, or any of these others agricultural structures. You know, they may want to ask first so they don't get into trouble. And then that there's going to need to be some kind of guidance about what does need to go through the formal review process and what doesn't.
I see a couple of FEMA agricultural structure policies in my FEMA box. So if Hannah can give me your, um, email address, I can send those to you and you can at least take a look at them.
Enjoy. Would you mind copying me on that email?
Yeah, sure.
And Scott, if you could copy me on the Medway letter, just because I'm sure this issue is going to come up in other Franklin County towns that have agricultural activities.
Yeah, um, yeah, my, my, the email address for the conservation commission is just conservationcommission@waitley.org. And Joy, when you send it to me, then I'll have your email address and I can send you the Medway letter.
Conservationcommission@waitley.org.
Yep. No spaces, no punctuation.
I'll send it in the morning.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry to be a pain in the butt, but
No, it's
I've just been sort of like drifting along saying, okay, well, that's, when this gets finalized, I'll figure out how we're going to do this. But, you know, I'm starting to realize that this may require more work, not just in the review, but in the setting up of regulations and procedures than I had expected.
Yeah. And I'd like to be helpful if I can, you know, my colleague Garrett Carlson, I don't know if any of you have contacted him in the last 33 years, but he's been doing this job in Mass for that long. And, um, I'm sure he's run into this, you know, uh, I mean, there are many agricultural communities in Massachusetts. So, um, I'm going to be talking to him tomorrow too and asking him, you know, if he's got any guidance for you or can give you the name of another town who's done something like what you're concerned about. And then we can, you know, see what they come up with.
Yeah. And when we get to the point of writing this stuff up, Margaret, I think I would want to work with the ag commission to make sure we cover most of the things that farmers are going to have questions about.
That sounds great.
You may be a model for the rest of the state.
I'm surprised. I mean, you'd think this would have come up, you know, along the Westport River. I mean, it's true that this is, there is a lot of agriculture here relative to the rest of the state, but there certainly are other places in the state where there's.
Cranberry buds too.
Right.
Oh, yes.
It's probably because the nature of my job means that I know more about this than most of the people need to. And so they, they have a general sense of how this is supposed to work, but they're not aware of some of the legal details. Uh, like the Medway letter, I doubt very few conservation commissions have ever heard of it or even aware of it.
Yeah, we could put it on our website if it's applicable, you know?
Yeah. I mean, it's strangely written. It's written in a way where you can't easily pull excerpts out to sort of illustrate a point. You have to sort of read the whole thing to get the gist of it. But it's been cited multiple times as a basis for why wetlands bylaws can't go any farther than the weapons, uh, the exemption under the Wetlands Act.
Scott, are you of the opinion that we should go ahead with the bylaw now? Or do you want it, or should we spend more time thinking about the process and, and the implementation before we take it to town meeting?
Well, I think I would just want to make sure that everyone is clear how this is going to work before you finalize it and put it up for a vote. So if you write something and you never intended for the conservation commission to promulgate its own regulations, but we feel like we have to in order to cover these kinds of things, then we don't want that kind of a surprise to happen. Or the other way around, where we have no intention of doing all of that work and, and, and you're thought, well, I thought you were going to do the review and approvals. And, and how, how the Hannah's job's going to apply in this is still an unknown to me, you know? Are you just an administrator or are you make a decision maker? You know, are you somebody who, you know, it's the last word for people who want to proceed, uh, and issue some kind of a permit to them? If they ask for one, yeah, I, I, I just don't know the process yet.
Yeah, I think that that's something that we're still exploring for sure. Um, I know that my approval is acquired, is required, much like the conservation's, uh, excuse me, the conservation commission's approval is. Um, but I think that those details are something that need to be discussed more thoroughly.
Yeah. I think we were all sort of drifting along saying, well, I, I have to admit, I thought Scott was more comfortable with this than, than he is and, uh, and that it will, well, it'll all work out, you know, but I think we do have to spend some more time thinking.
So are there other things we can accomplish here tonight or have we, uh, fully aired what we can air for this one evening? I see no further questions.
Mr. Betscha had his hand up.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yes, Brad, I had one more question. It's kind of a segue into where you're going. I was wondering if there was going to be any more meetings on this because every time I ask the question, I think the computer gods did not want me to ask it because I lost meeting connection. So I've, I've rejoined this meeting like five times, Sarah. So, um, I don't know if I missed any key parts or if there was going to be more meetings after this one.
See, that's what happens when you show up at so many planning board meetings. We arrange with Comcast to
You guys, you guys had me cut out. I know what you're doing. I appreciate that.
I, I think, I think we just decided that we need to regroup a bit before we come back to the town.
And there will be a public hearing.
Yes, there will definitely be a public hearing.
Public hearing. So there'll be another opportunity to provide input and get more information.
I was just wondering if there was, like at the next meeting, if you're going to have one, is to have a screen share of a portion of the map you folks keep referring to? Because if it's anything like, I'm very, I was very familiar with the HUD flood maps. And I don't know what these new ones look like for having any kind of control data to, uh, be able to establish the flood plain, because if, if I understood Joy correctly, that if even a portion of the building falls within it, then the whole building's in it. Are we talking being able to reproduce this to the nearest foot, 10 feet or a hundred feet? Because it's going to put a lot of, could potentially put a lot of people's, uh, buildings or any thoughts of what they might have in a very ambiguous zone because of how accurate the repeatability of putting that zone on the ground is for a project.
Yeah. These are the HUD maps, uh, Mr. Becta. Because FEMA didn't take over this program until the early 1980s. So your maps are actually the HUD maps.
Okay.
But you're right. I mean, uh, if it gets down to that close of a question, you know, then, uh, some engineering analysis is required, but I just can't wait till you get your newer maps. It'll just make your life so much easier, you know?
Yeah. The, it's, the, the maps don't have very much terms of references to, to try to figure out. Like you, you don't see buildings, you don't see much detail about like plot lines or, so, but what it does have is elevations. And so in the areas where, you know, uh, there may be a question, you would look to see what is the elevation marked on the map? And then, you know, a surveyor, you know, theoretically could figure out where that elevation would be and you could delineate it that way. But th- these are not, uh, very detailed maps.
So I did see one more hand get waved over in the box labeled Reed.
Yeah. Hi, uh, just got a quick, very basic question. Uh, we would be benefited by a single point of contact as a, you know, property owner. If we could just go to Hannah, for example, and say, here's what we're thinking of doing. Well, who do we need to see? How many people do we have to contact to get the proper permits? So instead of having her at the end of the list, maybe the number, number two in the list of, uh, what property owners need to, to try to do. Yeah, that's too common, a common sense thing to do anyways.
Certainly. Yeah. I'm more than happy to act as a point of contact. Um, with going through this review process, you will have to go in front of the different boards and committees. Unfortunately, I can't represent you in that process, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions or connect you to the people who can.
A good thing started. We've been helpful. Yeah. And are things that they were already doing, uh, are they at risk? Are they going to be grandfathered in that, um, especially in, in the campground, for example? Or are they subject to being disqualified or require, uh, modification? Or not be permitted at all under new, uh, new guidelines? Or will they be, will they be grandfathered?
Do you want me to try to answer that?
Sure, anyone who's.
So one thing I want to note is these guidelines, as you refer to them, they're not new. They've been in place for 50 years, but Massachusetts didn't adopt them all as they were supposed to. And so that's why we're having these conversations now. So they're not new. As far as things being grandfathered, um, so the reason that the NFIP has minimum regulations at all is because when a community says to FEMA, I want to be in the NFIP so my policy holders, so that my property owners can get a flood policy if they want to. Then the exchange is that FEMA says, well, okay, we'll let you in if you manage your flood plains well. And that way flood risks are reduced. And so we don't have so many claims on these policies that we're holding as insurers. So if that makes any sense. So when you say is something grandfathered, if I had to give you a yes or no answer, I would have to say no. However, uh, if there are violations, that's the hard word we use for those, uh, then FEMA and the state work with the community to resolve the violations, uh, in whatever way they can be resolved reasonably. So, um, you know, I don't know if, uh, you know, if, if your community is, um, oh, I don't know. It's really up to your community. And then, uh, if, if FEMA were to come and visit your community, they drive around the flood plains is how they do it. And the state does this sometimes too, drives around the flood plains and then reports back to the community and says, hey, look what we found. You know, at that point, then there has to be a conversation about things that are non-compliant. But it's not like we're looking for something every day in every community, because first of all, that's impossible. Uh, and there's a lot of other work that needs to be done. But the point of all this is good flood plain management and keeping people safe from flooding and property too. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
That's hopeful.
Joy, I thank you so much for coming. It's, it's been enormously helpful and Peggy as well.
Pleasure.
We, we definitely benefit from your collective wisdom.
If you, you know, again, you can, you can give my, um, my name and, and phone number I found on the website. If you go to mass.gov and you just put in flood plain management, you'll find it. We have web pages with materials there and Hannah has it. So if you have property owners, you know, if Mr. Reed wants to, um, ask some more questions, certainly, uh, willing to help anybody. That's our job. Thank you.
And thanks to everyone who came out tonight and, uh, listened and provided some feedback to us because it's a lot to work with. Okay. I think we're done for tonight. Thank you all. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Brad. Everybody, good night.
Okay, we're gone.